Ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting the order today for our June the 18th, 2024 budget meeting. First item today would be, I have received a request from Mr. Chip Williams to participate in the meeting tonight by electronic communication from a remote location due to a personal amount from which he could not physically attend. I have approved such participation under the county's adopted remote participation policy. I ask the Board of Supervisors to ratify this decision to allow Mr. Williams to participate remotely. Gentlemen, may I have a motion?
Motion me.
Do I have a second? Got a motion and a second? Got any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Mr. Williams. How you doing, sir?
Great, thank you.
All right, well, we got you here and we got the meeting started, so we're going to proceed. Our next item would be budget discussion. Mr. Tadlock?
Yes, sir.
If you want to start or not, we'll start, whatever you want to do.
Well, I can start and then we can go from there if you'd like.
All right, that's fine.
The board had asked to look at some additional reductions, so went back and looked at the We looked at, again, the county admin finance position, if the board wishes to remove that, add that back into the reduction list, and that would be reducing that position eighty four thousand six eighty-five eighty-four cent. Remove the deputy position, reduction seventy-seven thousand three ninety-four ninety. Remove the janitorial position, fifty thousand seven fifteen fifty-two. New item, looking at level funding, be aging, be a reduction of four hundred and eighty-four dollars. New item, Bay Transit Level Fund, reduction of two thousand six hundred twenty-three Social Services, reduce that by ten thousand dollars. RCC Level Fund, reduce that by two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The Library, reduce that by eight thousand dollars. The County CIP Transfer, the items for the body cameras, reduce that by the full amount, one hundred seventeen thousand seven twenty. The School CIP Transfer, reduce that by the full amount, nine oh three three forty-five. And the Capital Vehicles for the additional deputy, remove that, it was additional sixty-five thousand dollars. And then, the last item would be to take the salary from five percent to three percent, and then look at the request for the Sheriff and EMS, and reduce that by half, and that would, that'd be a savings of approximately six hundred, two hundred and sixty-five thousand nine twenty-four. Again, that's two hundred and sixty-five thousand nine twenty-four. So, I don't know, let's just begin discussions, if you have any other areas you'd like to look at, or any questions on those, we could try and answer those for you.
Questions? Okay, what'd you do about there? Did you, did you say you removed the deputy position?
Yes, sir. This removes all of the requested positions.
Well, you know, didn't the sheriff state this is something that, uh, he needed? You know, like I said the other day, we are one of the fastest growing counties, will be really increased in population, and, uh, we need this security, and I'm not far cutting the full amount that he's asking for. And then also the janitorial position, is that still, did you say you recommend that we cut that too?
Well, I think, based off the conversation that we had at the last meeting, was we need to look for additional savings. Really going through the budget, these are the areas in which, which we can save. I mean, we can certainly take a look at, at other areas if the board wishes to put these back in, and look at other areas so that you don't have to reduce, or increase the, the tax rate that much.
Yeah, I would like to see us do that because I'm not in favor of, uh, full cutting the Boys and Girls Club and the Food Bank.
Any particular areas you'd like to look to find some cuts? Any particular areas you'd like to look to find some cuts?
Oh, yeah.
If you've got something, we'd be more than glad to listen.
I'll tell you, uh, like the Little League, I don't think we should cut the total, total amount, maybe a half, and I was thinking about also the, uh, Rosenwald hat.
Give, you know, you say give Little League half?
Yes. Mm-hmm. And the Greater Regional Association half, Rosenwald half, Social Service half, I'm just going out to ones, I think. Okay, now, as far as the school division, um, right now, they don't have enough to even give, uh, salary increase or insurance, well, three percent like we give in other, uh, agencies. They would need, uh, five hundred and five, one oh six, for a three percent increase, and that would take care of their insurance and sirens, too. Also, the Social Service half. We ever said the Boys and Girls Club?
That's half also?
Half also. Food Bank, half, and the Haven, half. That's it. But want to make sure that we, uh...
We give the, we give the Haven five hundred dollars?
Yeah, give them half, yeah, that's what I was...
So, are you talking about half of what the, are you talking about cutting what's on the sheet in half, or are you talking about the, the total request in half? I just want to...
The total request, whatever they requested, you know, and cut it in half.
What did, what did they request again?
Five hundred, the Haven.
I know, we cut it by five hundred, and I'm just looking at, I'm wondering what they had actually requested, had we already cut it in half?
Have we already cut it in half?
Let me get to that.
What did you say about the positions? What, did you make a comment about the positions, what to do about them?
Uh, positions, yeah, as far as the Sheriff's Department...
All of them, the Sheriff's Department, yeah?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Uh, I think we need to, he was asking for how many deputies?
One, I think, one.
Yeah, one, that's what I thought.
One, one additional one.
One additional, I think we need to, with the population that we have growing, I, I think we gonna need that one deputy, you know?
How about the other positions?
Well, you know, I think we, uh, the janitorial position, we really need that.
So, are you saying, are you, are you recommending to finance the whole position? Because they can't do anything with half the money.
Right. Yeah, the whole position.
That's what I'm thinking. They can't go, you can hire somebody with half the money, so, same with, same way with the...
So, bring back the county, can't, excuse me, bring back the county admin, that's eighty-four thousand six eighty-five eighty-four, bring back the deputy at seventy-seven thousand three ninety-four ninety, janitorial back at fifty thousand seven fifteen fifty-two, and soon as luck will can tell us something on these other, on these other things.
And also the, bring the, uh, the sirens and the insurance for the, uh, teachers and staff, the three percent like everybody else would be getting.
That's not what we're going to do anyhow, right?
Huh?
We'd already done that.
No, they don't have enough, they don't have enough. Right now, with the amount of money that we gave them, they don't even have enough to, uh, do a salary increase or insurance. If you check the figures, went back and checked, we don't have enough. If, uh, am I right? And we have had some, I knew that was going to happen, we done had some teachers that leave, I knew it was going to happen, because they waited around too late, seeing some of these other counties already giving their contracts, and, uh, I hope we don't lose any more of the good teachers. So, that's, that's my suggestion.
I have a general question about those salary increases, if I may?
Yes, anytime.
Um, if we appropriate either the three, four, five percent to the school division, can we do that in a line item, and then put the ball in their court as to how they choose to, um, to spend it? Or is it a necessity, once we, we appropriate, do them for salaries that they use it in that hour?
Right. I, my suggestion, I don't know how the other board member, use that strictly for sirens and insurance.
Well, that's what we had decided to do.
I was under the impression that that's what we did.
No, it wasn't, uh, from my checking the figures and talking to, uh, some of the board members, one or two in the super, that it, they didn't have enough. What, what will we, uh...
Mr. Haney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Haney, hi, this is Paul Lake Warren, I have a super in second.
Hey, Dr. Walgo, how you doing?
Hi, I'm really okay, thank you for asking, I'm driving back, um, from the airport. I don't, when it's time, I would like to share where we are as far as the three percent as well as the health insurance, and I'm not sure, but I believe Ms. Mizik, Ms. Mizik and possibly Dr. Dave Curran plan on being there this evening, I'm not sure if they're in your audience.
They are sitting here, sitting here now.
Okay, so, okay, so, we do have that information for you when, after you are ready to be in the bus and stuff, I believe Ms. Mizik has that, and then Tarvee and I are participating online.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. We give, I forgot what, I got it down somewhere, how much money we give them over the...
It was, it was enough money in there for five percent increase in, for the health insurance.
We, we cut it back, and then we put the five percent in their budget, additional funding back in their budget.
But if you go back and check, we gave them the last, this year, and then we gave them last year, go back and check the figures, man.
Well, I'm not saying we didn't, oh, here it is.
I think that everybody's getting cut short this year.
They were, they were getting fourteen million eight fifty-five two forty-four, and that included the five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
Right.
Uh, let, uh...
So, that was a salary and all increase rate there?
So, five hundred and eighty-six thousand?
Let, uh, Dr. Walgo...
Yep, salary and insurance.
Ma'am, my question is...
She's online, right? You still at Dr. Walgo? Hello?
I am here, and we have our direct, the Director of Finance is online, too. Yes, we're here.
Let, let them explain. Can you explain about the not having enough for the insurance, a, a three percent increase?
Absolutely, uh, we did yesterday have a special call meeting, and I believe Ms. Mizik is prepared to read, I'm definitely prepared for everybody, so that he would have the numbers in front of the deal. Is it possible, Ms. Mizik, that she have that? If not, I can, I can cover it. We thought if he would want to hear that from her in person.
Come on up, ma'am.
And I'm going to mute, but then, if you have anything, I'll unmute, so just give me a couple seconds to unmute.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Denise Mizik, District Three, School Board Member. For your hearing, hopefully you have received a copy of this memo, have they, Mr. Tadlock?
They have, yes.
Okay. For the record, for the community, last week, the Board of Supervisors reduced the school division's twenty-two-four twenty-five budget request by six hundred twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. This reduction resulted in the school board scheduling two special call meetings on Friday, June fourteenth, and Monday, June seventeenth, to determine how to keep current employees at the current pay level. The reduction in funding prevented the school board from being able to fund any amount of a pay raise, or to fund the seven point two percent increase in health insurance. The school board identified the following cuts in order to meet and cover the Board of Supervisors' reduction in revenue while keeping salaries at the same level as last year, which is five hundred and fifty-one thousand seventy-six dollars. We have cut E-observation, Reassignment of Mental Detection, Professional Development Conferences, one-day conferences only will be approved, cut instructional budget for Northumberland Elementary School, Northumberland Middle School, and Northumberland High School, cut hourly pay to teachers who cover class when substitutes are not available, cut career and technical education coordinator stipend, remove three copy machines at Transportation Office, Elementary School Counseling Office, and High School Second Floor, tuition reimbursement, one course per year in a pre-approved program only, cut Northumberland High School Mathematics Teacher Vacancy, cut Talented and Gifted Budget Line by half, cut School Counselor Vacancy, cut Health and Physical Education Vacancy, reassign current Health and Physical Education Teacher, cut postage, cut Materials and Supplies, cut Special Education Vacancy, cut Technology by ten percent. It is extremely important and significant to note that with these cuts and subsequent changes, the Northumberland County School Board will be unable to fund a raise of any amount, nor will they be able to supplement the division's employee seven point two percent health insurance increase. As a result, each employee will have to cover their own insurance increase. It is noteworthy that last week Chairman Haney stated numerous times, we need to do the same thing for the schools as the county employees, same amount of raises as county employees. The school board would like to know how they are supposed to fund such a statement when the Board of Supervisors has chosen to reduce the school's funding, which results in a significant financial deficit, while taking away from essential student learning programs, employee raises, and health insurance coverage. It is unfortunate that for the third year, the school division continues to wait for an approved budget appropriation from the Board of Supervisors during the later weeks of June. As a result of the aforementioned, the Northumberland County Public Schools are requesting that the Board of Supervisors approve the following, in an effort to meet the chairman's statement of equity for all county employees. One, an additional five hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars to fund a five percent raise for employees, or an additional three hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars to fund a three percent raise for employees, an additional one hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars to fund a seven point two percent health insurance increase. There's some additional comments from Dr. Curran.
If I might add, Dr. Dave Curran, out of District Five, I, I do want to explain a couple things. The school board took notice that the Board of Supervisors thought that we should really look at our budget and make determinations as to whether or not we can cut areas, and I think we have proven that we've done that, we've come up with the, the difference between the six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. So, we've taken that very seriously, and we will continue to do that. I've stood in front of this board before, and I said I'm all about efficiency in the, in the school board budget, and I still believe that. When we're looking at, when the Board of Supervisors makes a reduction in the amount of money that they're going to give the school, it has a greater effect than the sole amount that you're given. And Ms. Booth, you can correct me if I'm wrong at any point. So, if you reduce our budget by six hundred and fifty-three, six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, the state will reduce the amount of money that they give us to operate. And because the state has to, is going to be reducing our, our budget, we can no longer afford to give that three percent raise. Hopefully, that makes sense, as to why the money differences are, seem to be so great. It's not an even wash, it's not, we cut the budget by six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, and that's what it is, and the state keeps giving us our money. It's all contingent upon the ADM for the county. I looked today at the cost of living adjustment for the United States, it's three point two percent. The average mean income for a house in Northumberland County is, worth is four hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. That represents a three percent raise, right there, on income that the county's going to receive over the next year. Now, I understand we can't spend money that we don't have, but that money will be coming if that rate continues. So, what the school board is asking is that we're going to make those reductions, but we're asking that, we're looking for equity for our teachers and our employees to get the same amount of raise that everybody else does, and I don't think I'm off the chart here by saying that if the Board of Supervisors agrees to supplement a three point, a three percent raise in the insurance, that money can be line itemed, and we will spend it for, exactly for those raises. I don't think that's irresponsible. That being said, we're also going to make the cuts that we made, and we think that that is something that the school board takes seriously, we've received your message, we hear what you're saying, but we also believe that equity needs to be given throughout the entire county.
One thing y'all forgot to mention, the composite index, all right? I made a big change in the funding for the school, I believe over about a million dollars there, though.
Yeah, and I also didn't discuss that, you know, you raised the, the point, Mr. Long, that the population of Northumberland County is growing, and therefore the population of the school system is also going to grow. We're not growing our staff to meet that at this point, so we're taking that into consideration as well when we're looking at our budget.
All right, how many dollars were you, would you be cut by the state if you did not receive any additional funding?
Tarvee, do you have that number?
So, yes, our state funding was cut by one point two million dollars, that's why we had requested so much more from the county. So, when you appropriated or said that you were going to give us the additional funds, the five eighty-six eight twenty-eight, that we were able to reduce that, subtract that from what the state was not wanting to give us in revenue, but even with that number, that was still two hundred thousand dollars less than what we actually needed for the five percent increase with the health insurance, because that total was seven eighty-six eight twenty-eight, not five eighty-six eight twenty-eight.
All right, how about you have a five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars of additional state funding that you received?
Yes, sir, that, that was, that was not additional to last year, that was simply more than what the previous test tool, the previous estimate was. That's when we dropped the request from one point seven million to one point two million.
All right, and we put, we put five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars additional funding back in to cover your five percent salary increase and your hospitalization increase.
So, in order for that to go in that direction, we would have to cut one point two million dollars from our budget, but now we, the board has cut five hundred and fifty-one thousand seventy-six dollars. They would have to find, God knows where, another seven hundred thousand dollars to cut from the current budget to be able to offer a raise to the staff.
The thing of it is, we cutting our county budget by millions of dollars, not just one million, we doing two, three million dollars trying to get it down into, to a point where we can handle it, or the taxpayer can handle it. And I know you, I know, I know you look at income and all, but income is not that high with, with the majority of people in the county. I don't know, I just do not know.
But see, the thing about it, though, we giving, and, I know, I'm going to vote for fairness, if you giving everybody else three percent...
We are giving them the same.
No, you're not either.
We are.
You're not giving them the same amount of money.
They're not using that money for the, for that.
No, you're not giving the same money, you're not, you're not giving them the same, you're not even giving them the same amount that you gave, we gave them last year, when you go back and figure, it's not...
The whole county's not getting the same amount they got last year.
I ain't, but they're getting three percent.
And so are the teachers.
No, they're not either, they can't afford it, I mean, you're not listening, you're not listening.
Five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars is more than three percent.
No, no, you, you're not...
According to that figures, no.
Gentlemen, I'm confused a little bit, enlighten me if you would. We appropriated a certain amount of money so the teachers would get their raise and their insurance.
That's right.
We appropriated a certain dollar amount for that to happen. We said we were going to do that from the beginning, that was, that's what I understood.
That's exactly what we done.
Is, is it correct for me to say then that they're taking that money? Why aren't they getting the raise then, if we gave them that money so they would get that raise?
that raise? That raise that they wanted? Where is that money we sent to them for them to get that raise? Are they using it for something else? Did they not get the money? Did we misappropriate? Did we not give them enough for them to get that raise? Did we...
We gave enough of the raise. We gave enough of 5 percent.
Wait a minute, I'm waiting one at a time so I get my head clear here. I want to know why these people are not getting their raise. Can you answer that question, start off with, and then I'm going to go?
We appropriated enough money for the insurance and the raises.
Okay.
We haven't voted on it yet, but that's what we all agreed to here last week.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought we said that from the beginning.
And if they don't use it for that, that's not on us.
We were going to take care of the teachers so they got their raise and their insurance. So where has that fallen off track now to where they are not getting it? These people are telling me they're not going to get it. Why are they not going to get it?
It's not on us.
Ms. Booth, can you explain? Ms. Booth?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So because the local composite index increased, local composite index means the amount of money based on the state formula that they feel that the local taxpayer can afford to pay. So whatever data they use to come up with that formula, they increased Northumberland County's local composite index. Because of that, the state is providing over a million dollars less revenue to the school system because the state is saying the locality can afford to pay it. Yes, that would mean the taxes would have to go up, but they're saying the locality would have to pay it. In order for us to give a 5 percent raise, as you're saying you wish, we would have to cut over a million dollars from our budget. After two days of meetings discussing our budget, the only way to do that, and we've already cut positions, would be to rent people. The only way to cut that type of money is to cut positions and fire people. People would lose their jobs. There is no other way to come up with 1.2 million dollars.
Okay, so...
We were able to come up... I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Fennel Rappin. Go ahead, ma'am, finish up.
The board was able to cut 551,000. They were able to cut half a million dollars by cutting some positions that currently are not filled and cutting lots of other categories. Beyond that, the only way to cut additional funds is for us to cut employees.
Alright, how many positions and programs were made with Esser and Opera Funds?
I don't know that number off the top of my head, but anybody who was in one of those positions, those positions that were paid with Esser funds do not exist for the fiscal '25.
Alright. We cut your budget by 1.2 million and give you back $586,000. And we specified that that would go for teachers' salaries and insurance.
Yes, sir, but that 568 doesn't cover 5 percent in insurance.
According to your figures, it did. What you told us we needed.
That's where the problem is. That's where we've got to hold up.
And we went by your numbers.
That's where the problem is.
From my understanding, it had 786,828, and I believe someone on the board said that we could make up the difference in our budget. The problem is that we don't have the same revenue from the state. We don't have the money. The only way to do it at this point, to cut further, is to get rid of positions.
Alright, well, we're probably not going to be giving a 5 percent raise to our county employees. It doesn't look like it right now. You already had 1.25 percent already in your budget. We gave you $586,000 additional money to cover the salary and health insurance.
But Mr. Haney, that 1.25 percent was in what we requested. That's really not even on the table because the overall budget that we're getting is less than we got for this current fiscal year. So there is no 1.25 included in what we're receiving for this year from the conversations.
So you would need additional $326,586?
In order to give a 3 percent raise with the health insurance, 505,106.
For a 3 percent raise. How much was that again?
Same thing I said.
505,106.
505,106.
505,106.
The same thing I said.
Alright, we just gave you 586,000. That gives you 80,000 additional funding that you can use anywhere you want.
That 1.25 can't be put toward, so far it can't be put toward the reasons because apparently we have more employees than our budget will support, but not more employees than the county needs.
I don't know. I'm just looking at the overall budget for everybody in the county, and we're having to make a lot of cuts that we don't want to. We have no other choice. We already have to raise taxes, and the taxpayer cannot afford an eight to 10 cent tax increase.
I just want to make sure it's clear that with this budget, the school board will have to cut positions more than they already have. They've already cut seven, maybe eight, but those positions were not filled. Moving forward without the additional funds, there will be current employees who will have to be reduced, there will have to be a reduction in force.
Tara, if I may, this is Holly Workes speaking.
Yes, Dr. Augro.
The statements that Ms. McEred this evening, if you appropriate what you discussed last week, the school board met twice for a long deliberate conversation, and based on that appropriation, we will not be giving any type of 1.25 percent step or any type of salary increase. We will simply be making the cuts that Ms. McEred. We will keep all current employees at last year's salary, and we will not be able to cover the 7.2 percent health insurance increase. That's where we are based on the figure that you provided last week. And I'm beginning to repeat that, I'm happy to. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
No, that's okay. And how much funding did you say that the state was going to cut you because you didn't get your full budget?
Tara, can you provide that please? With over 1.1 million.
And how much did you...
Our whole budget, we only deducted from the budget overall was less than $200,000 more, but our state costs were cut almost 1.2 million dollars.
And then it was 1.7 million additional tax dollars coming from the county.
Correct. And then they gave us an additional little over 500,000.
Yep. That brought you back to 1.2 million.
And so then you're still 1.2 million beyond.
Alright. And then you've got $586,000. So you're only being cut by a little over 500,000.
Well, the reason that it doesn't work that way, Mr. Haney, is because we didn't have a 5 percent increase in our budget. So those numbers are all new. The 5 percent to pay for the raise was never in our budget.
Did you have a 1.25?
We did have a 1.25, but we didn't get our what we requested. We got less than what we requested, so that's not in anything now either.
Well, that's where the 586 was to cover the difference between.
So that would be if we were able to cut everything else and give that budget. There's no way we can make up over a million dollars without cutting positions. That is currently held by the board.
The board members got any comments?
Well, I'm sticking with if we're giving everybody else 3 percent.
We've already funded that.
Right to give the school board 3 percent by giving them that 505,106.
Give them 586.
And that would be...
And they've spent it elsewhere.
That would... What she is explaining to you, Richard, is...
I can't help that.
Look, composite index, do you understand the composite index?
What we told them we were going to do.
Do you understand the composite?
I understand a whole lot about the composite index.
I doubt that you don't, because the way she explained it, the composite index had hurt Northumberland County. This supposes that.
Well, how about the county? Don't you think the composite index hurt the county?
Yes.
Alright, where is the county going to come up with the money?
We have to work.
That's the question. The county is having difficult times now coming up with the money.
We just have to come up with it.
Why are we here again today, struggling on a budget that we can't find the dollars for? We're trying to make cuts everywhere where we haven't made cuts before. That's the big problem.
Well, it can be done. It can be done.
Well, I don't know. I don't know what we're going to do to find money without raising taxes out of sight.
No, I don't think we'll have to raise taxes out of sight either, and we can get the money.
I don't know. What do you all think? Chip, what do you think?
I've got a question. And it's to the school division. And it is, how can you say with any amount of certainty where your new cuts would come from at this point, i.e. removing positions? The Board of Supervisors on the county side has gone through our budget several times to locate additional cuts in different locations each time. How can you tell us tonight that the only place you will be able to find other cuts is going to be by removing positions?
I'll try to answer that because the school board has spent two days looking over the entire budget, looking at the needs of the students, looking at the whole budget, and they have cut, cut, cut to a $251,000, over $551,000. There's nothing left to cut in the budget without having to do a reduction in force at this point, which is not, I'm not in favor of a reduction in force.
I don't think that anybody on the Board of Supervisors is in favor of that type of reduction in force either. But although you've had two lengthy meetings on your budget and looking for cuts, doesn't mean that you have to stop there?
There is literally nothing left to cut without, I mean, what's left is major student program cuts. I'm not in favor of that either. We've been given a budget that's less than the current budget. We're asking for a 30 percent raise for the employees and for the coverage of the 7.2 percent health increase. You can put it in a line where you can monitor it. It will be spent in a very responsible manner. That's basically what we're asking for.
Chip, you have anything else? Tadlock, what else do you have right now? We'll think about it and we'll move on to something else.
Yeah, that's all I have.
And we'll just keep looking and thinking, see what we can cut and what we can fund.
We have not yet dug into the emergency services and the sheriff's department, to my knowledge, as far as their raises.
Didn't you make some cuts on that just a while ago? Proposed cuts?
Yes, sir. That was on the last page, last item. If you look at going from a salary of county employees from 5 percent to a 3 percent, and then do half of what the sheriff and EMS requested, that you're looking at approximately. And we've had some changes within those departments, so it's not exact, and that's why we need those figures now so we can do the final figures on them.
We need to know how many dollars is in the pot. We don't know that until we know what we're going to give these other people.
Well, I want to ask you this. When you lose deputies, EMS providers, because they're not getting paid and they go into other counties, the counties around us, where are you going to find your people?
That leaves one alternative. And I agree with you. You're exactly right, and you hit the nail on the head.
I mean, we can't fix but one problem at a time.
I know. That leaves one alternative, much as I hate to admit it.
What's that, Junior?
I say, in order to get the money to finance these people, the money that we don't have right now, EMS, sheriff's department, schoolteachers, to my way of thinking, it only leaves one alternative. First of all, we've got to decide whether or not we're going to, what raise we're going to give them. Then we've got to decide how much money it's going to take that we don't have. Then you've got to decide how much you're going to raise taxes. Or you might as well put it back in your pipe and smoke it. I don't believe we need to dig out any of the money that we've got in escrow. We've dug into that too much already. That's our insurance. That's our insurance policy. We've dug into it too much already. Personally, I'd rather see a tax increase more than to dig into that. We need good schoolteachers. We need good EMS. We need good sheriff's department.
Right.
It's going to cost money. I'm sorry, but it's going to cost money.
Right.
I hate taxes just as much as anybody. But sometimes you have to bite the bullet.
I love you. You said you had to find out something from the departments. Explain yourself a little more in detail, what you were looking for, or what you're waiting for or looking for.
No, it's nothing. I'm kind of waiting on the board to know what salary you all are looking at so that we can find...
I'm kinda waiting on the board to know what we, what salary you all are looking at, so that we can finalize our numbers.
I think we need to stick with the 3%.
Yeah, we're gonna have to stick with 3%. I agree with you on that.
Hey, what's your input if we find the thing that we need to find, EMS, sheriff department, school? About how much would we need to, uh...
Thank you. Go ahead, Jim.
How much of a tax increase would be?
On what?
Okay, EMS, sheriff, and the school. And the 3% for all county agencies.
So you wanna do 3% on county employees. You wanna do the additional for school? And then what else?
EMS, what we said we'd like to give them, and the sheriff department.
All right, if you can give me a few minutes, I can try and run those.
Yep, take the time you need.
I mean, if you all wanna take a recess, that's gonna take...
Yeah, that'd be good.
Let's take a 10-minute recess. Hey, Chip?
I'm with you.
All right, okay, just wanted to make sure you're with us. Call the...
Yes, sir.
All right, we're gonna call this meeting back to order.
Microphone's on, too.
Call this meeting back to order. All right.
All right, so 3% county, put back in the EMS and the sheriff, um, as they requested for their salaries. And putting back the four positions plus the vehicle that would be needed. With, so we were down to a four, to a 4% to 5% tax increase. Go back to an 8% tax increase to what we advertised. And that's all I added back in. I didn't add back anything else in. You're looking at still dipping into the undesignated fund balance, about $2.8 million. $450,000 of that you can remove because of the reassessment.
8 cents.
That's with 8 cents.
And that's not set in stone yet.
Well, that's as high as we can go, because that's what we advertised.
Yeah, I know, we can't go any higher than 8 cents.
And you don't have time to re-advertise?
Nope.
So 8% would cover those EMS, all those people that...
It puts back what they requested, yes, sir.
And what numbers did you include on the school division side in that formula?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you. That did include the 3% increase on the school side as well. So I add it back, the 505,001,06, which included the 3%, and the 7.2% for the health insurance. So the 331,934, and the 173,172. So given that, it would be a reduction to the school... Let me get back to their budget here. So it should be a reduction to their budget of 118,850.
118,000?
Correct, 118,850.
850. Reduction on the school side. And we've already cut, I don't know, whatever to the county side. And all I hear all year long is how we have to keep our taxes down, keep our costs down because of the elderly and the people that aren't fixed income, how they cannot afford to do anything. The working class out here is working, struggling, and yet then we wanna raise taxes on them like I don't know what. Just throw all that right at the window and just up the taxes. No.
You said 8%, right, Mr.?
It's 8 cents.
Not 8%, 8 cents.
8 cents?
8 cents.
Just hypothetically speaking, if you call them, $200,000 piece of gear.
8 cents, 100. 8 cents, 100. Taxes will be out of sight. Taxes are gonna be out of sight next year.
Yes, sir, for a $200,000 property, you're probably looking at about a, guess, a $160 increase.
Right.
You're only getting $1,400 a month. And you're already strapped. You're not gonna pay your taxes.
I think we have one of the highest county rates around, percentage of people paying the tax though.
Yeah, but are they gonna be able to afford it without having to do, if something else that is a necessity?
I think they will. Yeah, what we doing now? We putting the money where it's really needed. EMS and... The sheriff say he can do it out of deputy. Let's start selling.
Any board members got any comments? So what does the board want to do? They wanna think about it? They wanna vote on it? They wanna recess? They wanna go home? Whatever you wanna do.
Well, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not voting for an 8-cent tax increase.
You're not on this one?
Well, I'm voting for it.
I just said it would scare you. Well, he just finished with the numbers, I said it's gonna scare you. Just sit there diddling.
No.
I mean, we got other, we got other potential reductions here that we need to look at. As far as I'm concerned, the two pages here. It's kinda hard not to help out the food bank and different groups like that. I mean, you could level fund those groups, but the rest of it, just cut it. Fund the EMS and the deputies and do the 3% raise, and that's it.
Everybody has to be cut.
I don't know. We're only, we're only working with a certain minimum.
Well, we cut, we cut, like the free health clinic, and we cut that in half. Cut everything in half down there. That should have helped some. Cut the little league in half, right? Create a reasonable association, put all those things in half.
Doesn't look like we're gonna work it out tonight. What's the next meeting night y'all wanna have?
Dates?
Thursday's the next day coming up.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, would that be the 20th?
That's not good for me. The 20th?
20th at 5:30?
That's not good for me. Something over 20.
Planning a mission that night, too, but as long as we can get it done by 7 o'clock.
Man, why would I do...
Come 5 o'clock, come 4:30, 4 o'clock.
Man, I can't understand it. We can stay here and do it now instead of coming back, going over the same thing. We're gonna have to raise tax some anyway.
Already had, we raised it by 4 cents?
Raised that last year when we left it in, when we approved the budget.
We already tax increase, increase. I know, we approved the other night. And that's what we need to stick to. Man, you're hurting people. You can't hurt people. So you're not hurting the taxpayer?
Look, a lot of people, as long as reasonable, and it's helping, it's gonna help the county, help people. Most people don't realize that in some instances you have to raise tax.
Yeah, we are raising taxes. We already had 4 cents there.
It'd be about $80 a year increase on $200,000.
Yeah, on $200,000. $200,000, that's not much, that's not much property. And then when you're on social security, there will leave you many dollars left.
For $200,000, going from 61 cent tax rate to a 69 cent tax rate, you're looking at an increase of $160.
$160, yeah.
Because it's per $100.
But let's be clear, we're talking about the increase, not the overall payment. That's just the increase we're talking about.
Yes.
Correct.
That's correct. Increase only. Whatever you had last year, add this on to it.
Yeah, so for $200,000 property, you're looking at roughly $1,380.
And for most people, that's a month's social security.
Mine's running about a little over $5,000.
So you got quite a few months of social security. I do take...
Well, I tell you, we need to...
I don't have anything left. That's where I gotta go back and work.
We need to go over these things again, instead of sitting there talking. Let's get this stuff straight, man. Calling meetings and doing the same thing is not working. Even the taxpayer's gonna tell us, man.
All right, what does the board want to do? What, have any comments, questions?
I'm like Jimmy myself, I'm not, I don't want a reasonable tax increase, but 8 cents is too high.
8 cents is too high. 4 cent, I'll go along with that, but not anything over 4 cent. Made a decision the other night on things. Everybody was in agreement, and now we're changing their minds. We're making cuts everywhere across the board. We all have to make cuts.
With the, Tadlock, taking the deputy away and the cost for the sheriff department, how much does that take off?
140. 77,394.90 plus 65,000.
130,000. 130,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. He's cut more than anybody on the map.
How much would that, uh...
It'd total be 142,394, roughly.
So that means we have to cut out much more.
A lot.
Hey, you just...
$1.2 million. 287,000 equals 1 cent.
Well, let's start working on it, man. Let's start shaving and toeing on it.
What you brought in here earlier today would give us a 4 cent tax increase, what we started it with.
That was a 5 cent.
That was a 5 cent.
That's what I...
All right, as best you can do was 5 cent on that.
Five, 5 cent.
That keeps everything else the same.
The way that I had it earlier, everything that I added, that I read off tonight, was a reduction.
Was a reduction. And that came to a 5 cent tax increase.
That was between a 4 and 5. That was between a four and five. I, I went with a five just to see what that would do.
My motion is to go with what he came in here first.
Okay. That's not, that's not including the school though, right?
That does not include the school.
Well, I can't go along with that. I mean, if we're going to give the county everybody 3 percent...
We're taking away from the county.
If we're going to give everybody 3 percent, I mean, you got to give, give them 3 percent.
They got $586,000 last time for a 3 percent raise.
Richard, I didn't fully follow you.
Luttrell's numbers would work out. I'm making a big reduction now. What is, what is his reduction?
But it's cutting half for the sheriff and the EMS though.
Yeah, it's cutting half the sheriff and EMS, and I'm not, I'm on the fence both ways on it.
Well, it's...
I'm going to withdraw my motion right this minute because I haven't got a second to it. Well, Luttrell came here with $2,468,000, $217.26 of cuts. And that would give you, and you would, and that was a five cent increase then. All right. And that was with what we had already funded the school. Correct?
Correct. That, that was, because I already have that number in there.
All right, that number's already in us. The school's been funded, and that is my motion.
No, you haven't funded it.
Luttrell stated it a little while ago.
You have funded 505, 106 though for that increase, 3 percent increase and, plus the insurance.
Do I have a second?
Did you, is, are the sheriff's salaries and EMS salaries full?
Are they full or partial?
In this, it's partial.
I'd like to amend that for theirs to be full, fully funded.
Add it so theirs are full, all right? I'll, I'll go along with your amendment.
And I'll second.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Williams, have, have you heard what we're talking about?
I have, but I'd like for you to run it by me one more time.
All right, we will, but Tadlock came up with these figures. I guess you've seen these figures?
Oh, yes.
All right. That would fund everything as we have so agreed with five cent tax increase, only half of sheriff's department and EMS, and then change that to, Jimmy wanted to change that, so he amended the motion to include the sheriff's department and EMS to full. All right. That is our motion to fund the county and school budgets. Mr. Tadlock, do you have a final number or do you still need time?
No, we, we're going to need time to go back and rework these, these numbers, especially the salaries.
All right. Do you think it's going to go over five?
Oh, I, I'd rather not say until we...
And that would give us a five cent tax increase, Chip?
Right.
Are these numbers including, are you including the 3 percent raise for everybody?
3 percent raise is in there for everybody. Because we put, we put $586,000 in there for a raise and insurance.
Are you...
For the school system.
For the school system. That would cover their salary increase and...
Mr. Tadlock, I'm talking to Mr. Tadlock.
And insurance.
I'm talking, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to Mr. Tadlock.
I'm just telling you what we've already put into it, and that's what your motion states.
Oh, you include the 505, 106 for the school teachers, 3 percent.
Call for motion.
And to cover the...
Motion?
The health insurance.
That, that only, that only includes the 623,956. That does not include the 505 that they requested.
Well, how...
All right, we got a motion on the floor.
How's that, no, I'm talking, how's that fair for, for everybody else to get 3 percent and for them not to get 3 percent? That's, that's not...
They are getting 3 percent. $586,000 we set aside for a raise.
No, they're not.
What they do with that money, I have no control over.
The lady is playing, Miss Boot is playing to you this simple, the average person can understand, the cost composite index. What happened? The reason they needed that 505, 106?
All right, we got a motion on the floor.
Yep, we got a motion on the floor. Y'all ready to vote?
Well, I, hey, look, I'm just asking, you know, everybody has a right.
I know everybody has a right.
You're right, you can't cut, I'm asking.
Nobody's called, nobody's called for the point yet.
Yeah. I'm asking that that 505, 106, to get these people a raise and be able to pay their insurance, that's, that's, that's being fair. They don't have enough to do it. I mean, the people won't get a raise and they won't, they have to pay a certain amount for the insurance. And I'm for the sheriff and EMS, all those, so, but I want everybody to be treated fairly.
All I know is what we agreed on the other night. Agreed on $586,000 for insurance. They need to go back through that budget and cut something else that's not...
But you're not listening to, you, you're not listening to the lady that really knows what she's doing.
I've not, I have listened to the lady. We've all listened to the lady.
No, I'm not putting all in it, I'm talking about you. You haven't listened. You haven't listened.
You calling for a vote, calling for a vote. Junior's called for a vote. All right, vote's been called. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Chip, what was that?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all those against? All right, motion passes four to one. All right, Mr. Tadlock, what else you have on your agenda tonight?
All right, that's all I had for the, the budget. We don't, we need to still run some final numbers on the salaries in order to get that back to the board for final votes.
You got some other appropriations and all you need us to look at tonight, don't you?
The first one is a supplemental appropriation related to the regional radio system. If you remember, the board had granted us to use some of the county funds to help offset some of the costs as it related to the radio system until we were able to get the matter resolved with Bank of America and American Tower. That hopefully has been resolved and we did receive the transfer of funds back from Bank of America in the amount of $279,796. And that goes to line item 9103, $7,031.
I'm glad we finally got that taken care of.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those against? All right.
All right, and the next supplemental appropriation I need is for the ADV grant through VMRC in the amount of $400,000. We've received those funds, goes to line item 1101-8006.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. There you go, Mr. Tadlock.
All right.
Anything else you have? Any board members have anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Second. Motion, a second to adjourn. Hold up.
Are you setting another work session?
Didn't.
Are you adjourning or...
Do you need one?
We're going to, yes, sir.
All right, when you want.
Because we need to approve the budget. We haven't approved the budget yet.
When you want it.
Whenever the board wishes to...
All right, when is the board? All right, somebody withdraw your motion.
Draw it.
I'm going to draw your second.
Second, withdraw.
All right, when you want it, Mr. Tadlock. Sooner the better.
Sooner the better.
All right, you tell us when.
The first of next week works best for me, if that's possible, Monday or Tuesday, either one.
All right.
He's probably going to want it before then, ain't he?
When you want it, Mr. Tadlock.
Keep yourself whatever time you need.
You want it this week?
Chip, whatever works best for everybody. If we can meet Thursday, that would be nice.
I won't, I won't be here Monday, unless you're going to do it very early Monday. Have to do Monday afternoon early.
He said, Luttrell said Thursday, work good for him?
I don't think that would work.
Friday afternoon's open.
What's that?
Friday.
I'll just have to be done by seven.
All right.
I can do it any, anytime.
Let's do it early in front, even.
4 o'clock?
Yes, sir.
4 o'clock? 4 o'clock?
Yes.
All right.
Let's see.
Motion to carry over till...
21st?
June 21st, 2024, at 4:00 PM.
4:00 PM, yes.
And will that be to hopefully approve the budget?
That will be to approve the budget. Final numbers, Mr. Tadlock, I have for us. All right, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, see y'all back on Friday, the 20, 22nd. There you go.